Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, January the 5th, 2015. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board members. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, December the 15th, 2014. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next order of business is approval of claims. This evening, Board, you have a docket of claims, three pages in the amount of $563,823.38. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none this evening.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated January the 5th, 2015, in the amount of $563,823.38.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. There is no unfinished business from the previous meeting. We have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none tonight.
Ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:03 PM. We will convene again on Tuesday, January the 20th, 2015, at 6:00 PM. The Board of Works meeting will convene in five minutes. Thank you.
Listen, I'll give you mine when I go down between two meetings.
Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, January the 5th, 2015. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board members. You have been presented a printed copy of the meeting minutes dated Monday, December the 15th, 2014. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
Dan, I do have a question or a comment on page three, right in the middle of the paragraph. It says, "Sandy Seward questioned whether we should table or revisit this part of the contract. She asked Mayor Buckley for his thoughts, and he thought it should be approved as presented. Sandy Seward moved to previous year." So just want to kind of check that maybe.
Okay.
Please.
Yes, I will correct that and go back in and listen.
Okay.
It looks like something didn't get all the way put in there.
Right, okay. Thank you, Dan. And that's my only correction.
I have none.
A motion to approve the minutes dated December the 15th, 2014, with the one correction.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next order of business is approval of claims. This evening, we have 28 pages of claims in the amount of $2,356,255.83. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I have a few. Dan, on page two.
Aye.
Got the sixth one down. It's not a big amount, but it just wasn't real clear. Public Agency Training Council for $295.
That's Marcus Public Training, Public Agency Training. Can you explain to her what that actually is?
It'd be one of the courses that our officers...
Okay. I mean, just so I know, this came from police, that's fine.
Right.
Thank you. And I got a couple more. On page 22, please. On the big ones.
Okay.
The TAW principle, they're paid in full. Do they have to be paid in full?
Yes.
Or could we break that down now and then maybe in August, pay the second half?
What we do is we pay that when we get our property taxes in, in May, and then in December. So this is the second portion, and they set them payments. It's nothing we do, but I can tell you, they want to know everything, how to get ahold of me and everything else, from cellphone to backup people to call in case that obligation could not be met.
Okay. And understandable, it's a pretty chunk of change there, so thanks for the explanation.
But it was paid off, I want to say, on the 26th, and then on January the 2nd. I think we got another installment.
Okay.
From the tax anticipation one.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
And I have none.
There's no other questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated January the 5th, 2015, in the amount of $2,356,255.83.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business to carry over from previous meetings. Under new business, we have several items, and I'll call the Public Works Director to the podium to conduct some business. First off, Brad, is request to hire a part-time employee.
It's my recommendation to the Board that the city hire Mitchell Ritchie as a part-time worker at the Department of Public Works. Mr. Ritchie recently graduated from Indiana University, wrestled there for four years, currently lives on Cherry Street in Beach Grove. The parameters of the position will be $13 per hour and no more than 29 hours per week. There is money in the sanitation budget to fund this position, and then that rate is reflected in the 2015 salary ordinance.
And this is the person that is replacing the person that resigned?
Yeah, the gentleman that left for a full-time job. This is just replacing him.
Perfect. Thanks, Brad.
Mm-hmm. And any comment? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the hiring of Mitchell Ritchie.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next up, request for step increase, Chris Harper.
Yes, my recommendation that the city promote Chris Harper from probationary labor, first year to labor, third year. If Mr. Harper is approved for this promotion, his salary will increase $168.14 per pay. Mr. Harper began full-time employment with the City of Beach Grove on September 6th, 2011, so he's past his three years. And again, there's money in the sanitation budget to fund this promotion. So it's also reflected in the salary ordinance this year that we passed.
Can you talk about how the salary ordinance changed?
Yeah, I was kind of nebulous before. It was just the things were broken down in a way that didn't make a lot of sense. We had commercial drivers, and then the other labels had been there since before me. A lot of them really didn't apply directly to what the guys did. So I did something that was a little more like what police and fire do, which I thought made a lot of sense, where for the first two or three years, you progress a guy up, and then we have another position called lead labor, where when you feel like a guy's taking more of a lead role in what goes on out there, you have that opportunity to put him into that, which is a little higher rate of pay than the first three. And then we have the commercial driver, which when a guy has a CDL, ultimately, you put him there because he's responsible for more, driving a trash truck, things like that. He has to keep his CDL active to stay at that rate.
Questions from Board members?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the step process for Chris Harper.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next up is request for step increase for Chad Seward.
Again, my recommendation to the Board that the city increase the hourly wage for Chad Seward from $12 to $13 per hour. This new wage rate is reflected in the 2015 salary ordinance. There's money in the MVH budget to fund this increase. So when I put in for that amount of temporary salary help in my budget, I reflected it off this rate, and that's what we passed for the salary ordinance as well.
Thank you, Brad. Before we proceed, I'll disclose that Chad Seward's mother is Sandy Seward, who is on the Board of Public Works Safety, so she will not be eligible to vote. She will abstain. So ask for a motion to approve the step increase for Chad Seward.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
I second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries. Step increase for Marcus Pyle.
Like Chad, I would recommend to the Board that the city increase the hourly wage for Marcus Pyle from $12 to $13 per hour. Again, it's reflected in the salary ordinance. I do have money in the MVH budget to cover it. These are guys that, you know, work on the back of the truck. They plow snow for us. They do a lot of jobs that are real valuable, and so that's why I wanted to increase what they made this year.
He came on part-time last fall?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I think the good observation about that is you have a pool of part-time people that you could pick from if you have full-time positions that become available.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great proving ground for that, yeah. And he's one of our guys that works permanent, full-time. He's a veteran, and he's been great. Haven't had any problems with him since he started.
Questions for Board members?
I have none.
Not ask for a motion to approve the step increase for Marcus Pyle?
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Step increase for Chaz Harper.
My recommendation again to the Board is the city increase the hourly wage for Chaz Harper from $12 to $13 per hour, again, reflected in the salary ordinance, and there is money in the sanitation budget to fund the increase.
Question for Board members?
Brad, can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
Because this affects a couple of them here. You don't have the limit of up to 29 hours.
That was there when they were hired, so I think that still plays in. This just is their hourly wage rate.
Which, I mean, I have no problem with, just for clarification.
Yeah, I think they're already under those parameters, because when they were brought on, we hired them under that, you know, pretense.
Any questions from Board members?
None.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the step increase for Chaz Harper.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Last order of business for Public Works is a request to surplus equipment.
It's my recommendation to the Board that the city surplus the 1996 Tarko TM3 leaf machine. The Department of Public Works plans to auction off this leaf machine to help fund the purchase of a new one. We purchased a new one this year, in 2014. We planned to buy another, or last year, in 2014, plan to buy another one this year. I think the leaf program was stellar this year, and I think really a lot of it was attributed to the new machine we bought. I have a sheet here, if you want to see it, that has the repairs for the last eight years on this machine. It just goes back to '05, and you can see that, especially in 2013, there was five different line items where we were just constantly fixing things on it. It's almost 20 years old, so it's something that really allows us to move through the city faster with a new machine.
Is this the one that the axle broke?
Yeah, and we actually took the axle off of, well, we took the axle off of this one and gave it to the one we wanted to keep, so this one also has a broken axle. So it's been, you know, through the wringer, so to speak. It's ready to be put out to pasture.
Well, I think you were responsible, and the city was responsible to purchase that new leaf machine, and it's just another improvement that was made, and we'll do it again this spring.
Did you guys want to see this by chance, just to kind of reference some of the...
Yeah, can we have it for the record?
Yeah.
Give it to Dan. Thank you. Any questions for Brad?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion for surplus to leaf machine, 1996 Tarko TM3.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. We have one more order of new business, and that's handicap parking permit approval, and I'll defer to the clerk for explanation.
Okay, this is just a standard renewal. They have a disabled handicap permit. He's paid the fee. The only thing we're waiting on is a letter from his doctor, which we should be getting, hopefully, tomorrow. His doctor was on vacation, but I see no problem with it whatsoever.
Questions or comments from Board members?
None.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the parking permit, handicap parking permit for Ted Van Pearson.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. That concludes new business for this evening. Comments from Board members?
Well, Brad, that machine's all fired up. I guess we're going to have it tonight, so tell the guys, good luck and be safe out there.
Appreciate that.
All right.
Also, watch out for the little ones at the bus stop in the morning, especially if they don't have a two-hour delay.
Maybe off if we get here.
Yeah.
Chad's helping, right?
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
No other.
No.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:20 PM. We will convene again on Tuesday, January the 20th, at 6:00 PM in these chambers. Thank you very much.
I didn't know that.
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Common Council meeting for Monday, January the 5th, 2015. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right. Dave Harrison, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District 3.
Ed Bell, District 2.
Kathy Coats, Counselor at Law.
Mary Stewart, District 1.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Under special presentations, this is the first meeting of the year, so we will elect a new President Pro Tem. And Ed, thank you for serving, but at this time, the floor is open for nominations.
I'll nominate Ed again. I think he's done a fine job.
Any other nominations? In hearing no other nominations, we will close the process, and we have to conduct a vote. We'll do it by voice, beginning on my far right. Yes for Ed or no? Yes. Anthony?
No. Yes.
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 Ed will serve as President Pro Tem until January of 2016. Mayor Ballard's liaison with us this evening? Please step forward.
Thanks for having me. It's very cold. I'm impressed by how many people are still here, so I want to say I noticed that the flag on top of the building is lighted, and how impressed I am by how quickly you guys work compared to some of the things that I try and work on with the City of Indianapolis that take a little bit longer, so very good. We are preparing for snow tonight, which I'm sure you guys are too, so our trucks have been out since Sunday at 11, salting. We've had a couple water main breaks over here in Franklin Township that have caused some trouble with some ice, and so we're working on that, but everybody's ready to go for tonight and to tomorrow. We started a change to our Christmas tree recycling program, which maybe you read about online or in the paper. We received a lot of pushback from residents. We were not planning to mulch the trees this year, and people called in and spoke up, so we have changed back to where we are going to accept Christmas trees again at Indy Parks. I don't know if you guys have your own tree recycling program, but everybody uses Indy Parks, so I'm sure several people probably do that anyway. So if you would like to take your tree through the month of January to one of the participating Indy Parks, you can recycle your tree there. And then I continue to work. We've had several changes in personnel at the mayor's office with Mayor Ballard's announcement that he will not be running again next year, especially appointed positions. Some people have changed and moved around. I am working to set up a meeting with Melody Park, who is the new chief engineer for the city since Andy Lutz has moved, and to try and set up a meeting, hopefully, with Ron from the RDC, so that we can all sit down together and talk about sidewalks and what we can work on together. So I'm learning more about that process. I continue to ask questions, which leads to more questions, and so we're still working on that. But, and then I just, that's all I had for you guys tonight, and didn't know if anybody had anything for us.
Council members have any questions for the liaison?
I'm good.
Not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, thanks for being here.
Council members, you have been presented a printed copy of the meeting minutes dated Monday, December the 1st, 2014. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, sir.
If there's no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Also, council, you have a printed copy of the special council minute meetings dated Monday, December the 8th, 2014. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections. There is no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And this one will require a signature of each council member, so if we start that While that is going on, we'll go to public comments, and I think all but one are related to General Ordinance Number 1, 2015, so I think only the top one is relevant to public comments.
Yep. Judge Wells.
Got, as I usually do, documentations. Think I have enough for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for having me tonight. I wanted to talk briefly about 2014, a year in review for the court. I've got extra copies of everything, if anybody in the audience would like. The big spreadsheet you have is just a breakdown of every dollar went through the court and where it went. I won't send or walk you through that. It's pretty self-explanatory, and we would be here for multiple hours if we broke that down completely. The bigger, or the other document is a PowerPoint document that I put together. I did the same thing last year, so I updated it for 2014. If you'll just flip through with me, total cases filed in 2014 were a little over 5,000. That was a record high for the court. The highlights from 2014, just generally speaking, the town of Speedway and the City of Southport continued filing moving violations and code enforcement citations. The City of Lawrence continued filing their code enforcement citations, and the town of Speedway, or excuse me, the town of Homecroft began filing moving violations. That's part of the, Beach Grove filed a few, they're still working on, I think that'll grow more in the future with their ordinance, or excuse me, their code enforcement violations, but there was a few of those as well. That led to the increase in cases. If you'll go to the next page, it's a chart of over the last four years, so the last year of Judge Hunter's term, and then through my term, the number of case filings, as you can see, were gradually increasing each year. The one thing, the one distinction I want to make, though, is a moving violation case, and I've said this before, so I'm just reiterating this, a moving violation case, so like a speeding ticket, those are filed electronically. Those are fairly easy to handle. A non-moving violation case, so anything dealing with someone's property, parking tickets, things like that, those are not filed electronically, so there's a lot of manual labor involved in those tickets, because we actually have to create the file. We don't store anything electronic, actually, we store an electronic file and a hard file, so it's a little more cumbersome. Next page is total disbursements for 2014. As you can see, it was just under $700,000 went through the court this year. That is by far and away a record. I broke down a little points of interest I thought you guys would want to see, the deferrals, Beach Grove, Speedway, Southport, that just gives you an idea of who's doing deferrals and what amount of revenue these cities are generating out of the deferrals. The net, and you'll see this on the big spreadsheet, the net money, so every case that's filed is broken down according to state statute and local ordinance as to where the money goes. The final end-of-the-day number to Beach Grove was $174,603. The rest of that, almost $700,000, is going to the other excluded cities that use our court, the State of Indiana mainly, they get a huge chunk, and then the county. So we're servicing a larger area than just the City of Beach Grove. Every level of government benefits from the court's operation. The next page is the total disbursements over the last four years, so again, the last year of Judge Hunter's term and then the last three years of mine. You can see that it's, again, increased drastically. We were, I don't know, again, I'm an attorney, I'm not a math person. It's 200 and some odd dollars, $242,000 more this year than it was last year, so it was a big jump up for us. Again, the next page, you can see the last three years, the net disbursement to Beach Grove, so again, a steady increase there, which has been good to see, I think. And then finally, what's coming up in 2015? We're going to continue servicing our local agreements. Every local government that uses us has expressed that they are pleasantly surprised, or I shouldn't say pleasantly surprised, they are pleased, that's the word I'm looking for, with how the relationship is working, and they are happy and they want to continue, and some of them are looking to use us more. The public safety program, I'm not sure where that is. I talked to some individuals at the Police Department, and from what I understand, it's not funded for this year, so that would have been a nice component. I think the local ordinance that was, that you guys passed earmarked 25% of that deferral money, so you would take that money, I think it was 22,000 from the page before, you'd set aside what, 25% of that, about $6,000, you could use to have extra patrols in neighborhoods that would generate, not only would it generate more tickets, but it'd help clean up the neighborhoods a little bit more, so hopefully, we'll get some more guidance on what's going on with that. The town of Clermont will begin filing in 2015. I haven't seen a ticket yet, but they're supposed to start this month, so hopefully that continues through. We have a, due to the large increase in ticket volume, and mainly because of the large increase of our ordinance violations that are manual ticket filings, we now have an Assistant Court Clerk. That person will start next week. And then we also have a couple meetings lined up with another entity in Marion County that's interested in using our court, so we will... Yes, there, the, by Indiana code, the city and town courts are allowed to handle misdemeanors, civil cases up to $3,000, infractions and ordinance violations. As of right now, we have only handled infractions and ordinance violations. None of the entities that use our court outside of Beach Grove file their infractions. They all want to. The Marion County Prosecutor's Office has determined that they shouldn't do that, so right now they're not. The Indiana State Police would like to use our court, and the Marion County Prosecutor's Office, again, has decided they don't think that's what should happen, so they're not doing that there as well. The city of Lawrence has not been filing their munis, their, excuse me, their moving violations that are local ordinances. That would be thousands of tickets that I have, I think eventually will come, but, but it's been a slower process with Lawrence. And then I'm not even touching on misdemeanors and things like that. Again, a lot of that is up to the prosecutor's office. If you go to other counties, their city and town courts handle a lot of that stuff. So there is a lot of room to grow, to grow. I think that'll happen once we become an older court and have more experience and a lot more practices in place that have been in place for years, and, and I, I think that'll happen eventually. But again, cooperation from some other local entities would, would expedite that, and it's just not happening right now. Any other questions on that, those materials? Okay. The other thing I just wanted to comment, I wasn't planning on commenting about this, but I had received some questions today, and it's about, I think, is it ordinance two, 2015, that has to do with the Ordinance Violations Bureau? I, I think there's, from what I understand, there's lots of confusion out there about the Ordinance Violations Bureau and the court's role. The Ordinance Violations Bureau is not an arm of the court. The ordinance violations, and it's not administered by myself, or, or, what do I want to say? Reviewed or analyzed by myself. It is a, an arm of the city. Every, if the city doesn't have a court, they can have an Ordinance Violations Bureau. A prime example of that is Speedway. So Speedway has an Ordinance Violations Bureau. Once a citation that is by law required to go to the Ordinance Violations Bureau has cleared their Ordinance Violations Bureau, they then file it into our court. So the similar mechanism happens here. When I took office, the, the court clerk was handling the Ordinance Violations Bureau, collecting the fees. The, the city ordinance said that the clerk treasurer should do that, but the court clerk was doing that. And I'm not sure how that transpired or why that was, and there wasn't much guidance given to her before I had started, started, and, and the current administration had come in as to how to handle that. So what we did was, I had the, I, myself, and I met with Craig and some other people, and again, this was back in 2012, so I, struggling to remember all the details, but the decision was made, let's change the ordinance first of all, because we're not in a position to do anything with it now. We can't change any practices now, there's too many question marks. So let's change the ordinance so that it says court clerk, which you all did. And then as time has passed over the few years, not only has the court, as you can see, grown in volume with cases, Cindy put in some processes on how to handle the Ordinance Violations Bureau and reporting and things like that, that, that have now been in place for a couple years. And actually, over the last year, as we become a lot, as we become more busy, the, the police department administration staff has kind of taken on that role a little bit more to assist her, because we just don't have the manpower to handle all the cases coming in with the court and do the ordinance violations bureau. The other thing is, I never felt too comfortable with the Ordinance Violations Bureau being ran by the court clerk, because the Ordinance Violations Bureau is an arm of the city, and I think the court should be separate from the city as much as possible, because it's a judicial arm. So she was never making decisions as whether or not a case should be, go from the OVB to the court, but I, I think the, the arms length, the distance, it looks better. So from my understanding, again, I didn't help draft this ordinance, I, I just looked at it based on the questions I got today. It seems to me that it is just simply clarifying and, and switching it back to the clerk treasurer's office from the court clerk. From what I gather administratively, nothing is going to change, other than the ordinance is going to switch, and then Cindy is no longer, the court clerk, is no longer going to be involved in the day-to-day operations of the Ordinance Violations Bureau. Hopefully I made a muddy situation a little clearer, so if you have any questions about that, please shoot.
I have a question, but a comment and a compliment. I just want everybody to know that in 2012, the net income or dispersment to Beach Grove was 82,800 some dollars, and in 2014, it was 174,600 some dollars. So I mean, it, the court is of value to the city in whatever way you want to look at it. I just want everybody to know that, and I thank you and Cindy and everybody involved in that, police department, ordinance violations, compliance, whoever is making it happen, it's a good thing.
Thank you. And you know, I, I think what's more important, though, than the number, the, the revenue coming through, is there's other things you can't quantify, is, is the, the service to the citizens. It's a lot easier, and nothing against, I mean, Marion County Superior Court, because I think the Marion County Superior Court does a lot of great things. But handling these type of issues is a challenge for a court that large, and I think citizens, now, none of them, we like to say, no one comes to our court because they decided they wanted to come, right? Usually there's something that's happened that's drawn them there. But I think a quick and efficient and fair judgment to them in a quick manner really is a service that people appreciate. And also, I think we've saved revenue by not having to send officers to Court 13 and other, and I know other municipalities have done the same. So there's a lot of unquantifiable benefits that I think go along with the court that sometimes get pushed to the side, but yeah, thank you for pointing that out. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
Kathy covered it.
Not, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Move to committee reports. I did not ask the youth council come this evening due to the weather. Greenscape Committee did not meet, Redevelopment Commission did not meet, Public Safety Committee did not meet, and there was no activity for the ABC. Financial report from our clerk treasurer, Dan.
Good evening, councilors. Happy New Year to all of you, and what a happy New Year it is for the city of Beach Grove, which ended the 2014 year with a bank balance of $2,703,902.38. I paid off the 2014 tax anticipation warrant on December 29th by wire transfer, so the withdrawal for that was immediate. When we took office January 1st, 2012, the city had just ended December 31st, 2011 with a bank balance of $219,725.85 and many outstanding invoices. That was not even enough to cover our next payroll. Coming from a business background, I would not be exaggerating in saying that it was both shocking and scary how a business that was running a budget of over $10 million ended the year with a little over 200,000 and outstanding invoices. Needless to say, 2012 was financially frightening, and there was nothing more embarrassing than reiterating time and time again that I was concerned about having enough money to meet payroll, but we forged through it. On Friday, January 2nd, 2015, our 2015 tax anticipation warrant was deposited into our bank account and brought the balance to over 4.3 million. The final tax anticipation dispersment will be deposited in the city bank account at closing, which I believe is scheduled for January 29th. Our tax anticipation will be lower than it was for 2014, so we are going in the right direction with that. Our property tax money came in on December 26, 2014. The city received $2,120,154.09. Sewage Special Collections received $77,467.46. And the RDC received $681,666.96. I transferred the monies into the sewage and the RDC on December 26th. I have included a copy of the Form 22 with my financial statement. Our category one expenses, personal services, which includes salaries, overtime, perf, uniform allowance, taxes, and insurance, and all departments came in under budget with each department, with the exception of the additional appropriations for overtime for fire and police. The fire department ended with the balance in their overtime additional appropriation. The police department did use theirs. As I stated before, all overtime pay for the police department in 2014 was paid from city monies. The city did not draw any money from the criminal investigation fund, which is much different from 2011 and before, when 70,000 or more would be paid from the criminal investigation bank account to accommodate the shortage in the police budget for overtime. Those were the days when only 30,000 was budgeted for overtime, which was the estimate of funds that came from the Safe Driving Grant, the OP Grant, and the DUI program. This year, those grants brought in 25,954.32, but the city budgeted 100,000 in overtime. As long as I am in office, that trend will continue, and the city will not use criminal investigation funds to pay for police overtime. The public safety program, which was an ordinance brought forth by Councilor Davison for additional overtime, collected $4,853.03. That was from January through December. I brought forth additional appropriations for overtime to the police budget in the amount of 20,000, and for the fire department overtime in the amount of 41,000. These were not requests made by the chiefs, but were brought forth from estimates I prepared for the last quarter. All budgets, the 101 General, 170 Public Safety, 201 MVH, 202 LRNS, 233 LLE, 301 Debt Service, 702 Fire Pension, 703 Police Pension, and 606 Sewage should come in under budget, with the exception of the additional appropriations that were done. And since they are the council and the DLGF approved, those will not count against us. Keep in mind, with the additional appropriation for 400,000, which was for paving, was funded from the 2012 return on investment payment, which we never were able to collect from sewage until this year. This is just a brief overview of 2014. The city of Beach Grove is in good financial shape. Both the citizens and employees deserve that. The citizens should have, the citizens shouldn't have to worry that their tax dollars are being squandered on frivolous adventures, and the employees shouldn't have to worry about if their paychecks is going to Clermont Bank. Our city website continues to grow and continues to be updated by our website volunteers. They have been very busy adding the 2015 pages. I can't thank them enough for all the volunteer work that they do for the city of Beach Grove. They put in many volunteer hours to keep the citizens up to date. The citizen, the city website can be viewed at www.beachgrove.com. It all, also has a community page for any organization that would like to advertise their upcoming events. I know the Beach Grove Library always has a lot of good information on their page. The bank balances are listed below, and as always, if you have any question, my door is always open. Thank you.
Questions or comments for the clerk?
If not, thanks, Dan.
Move on to compliance report, and you should have received, at your spot this evening, a compliance report for 2014. And that will be available, that's available for your review and to hold on to. Move, that completes committee reports. We'll move to unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. General Ordinance Number 24, 2014 is up for third and final reading, and I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 24, 2014 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 33 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove concerning the police chief and the criminal investigation fund for the Beach Grove Police Department. Whereas the Beach Grove Police Department has had for a number of years a criminal investigation fund, and whereas the criminal investigation fund is under the direct control of the police chief, and whereas the police chief and clerk treasurer are the only two people that has access over the fund, and whereas the police chief has the authority to purchase equipment and other approved supplies through the criminal investigation fund to fight crime and prevent criminal activities throughout our city. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 33 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove based on a recommendation from the State Board of Accounts during an annual audit. Now therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires that the following amendment be placed in the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove. Add the following. 33.01 Police Chief C Criminal Investigation Fund. One, the police chief has the authority to use criminal investigative funds to conduct police business and undercover drug purchasing operations. Two, the police chief or designee has the authority to pay for the purchase of drugs by using cash. Three, the clerk treasurer has the authority to issue a check to the police chief from the criminal investigation fund to be cashed for the purpose of conducting undercover drug purchasing operations with documentation that the check was issued. Four, the police chief and the clerk treasurer have the authority to make the transaction prior to approval of any governing board. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council of the city of Beach Grove desires to amend the Code of Ordinances pursuant to Chapter 33. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 33 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Motion to approve General Ordinance Number 24, 2014 on third and final reading.
Make said motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. At this time, I'll defer to the clerk to read it into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 27, 2014 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 105 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove pursuant to trees and flora. Whereas the Greenscape Commission was started to focus on trees and flora and to bring awareness to how important these items are for our city, and whereas rules have been established concerning the planting of trees, inventory of trees, and types of trees that are recommended to be planted throughout our city, and whereas inspection of trees for removal to prevent migration of insects occurs throughout the year, and whereas the Greenscape Commission desires to have a set of rules concerning sidewalk issues and tree roots. Therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 105 of the Code of Ordinances pursuant to sidewalk and root penetration. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires that the following amendment be included in Chapter 105 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 105.10, Protection of the Trees and Floor. Add the following. D, when damage to a sidewalk panel occurs from intrusive trees and tree roots, an inspection should occur by the city. A description of the issue and a photo should be made, along with a recommendation to correct a sidewalk panel issue. Prior to any removal of tree roots or the tree itself, it is recommended to use one of four recommendations to stabilize the sidewalk panel: temporary patch, sidewalk mendering, sidewalk ramping, and flexible materials in order to save the tree. Should the city decide to remove the sidewalk panel and remove the roots, an ISA certified arborist should supervise the pruning of roots. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend the Code of Ordinances pursuant to Chapter 105. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 105 of the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore, be it further ordained that the ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 27, 2014 is up for second reading only. General Ordinance Number 27-2014 is up for second reading only. I'll ask at this time for a motion to approve.
I make said motion, sir.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on third reading at the February meeting. General Ordinance Number 28-2014 is up for second reading only this evening and I'll ask before I introduce the ordinance, if there is an amendment to the ordinance tonight.
Yes, mayor, I do have several, but I will start with page four. Under section 130 dot oh-three, under E, the very last should be crossed out. It says to the city council and should be changed by, by the statement, by filing a mandated action in the city court. And then the, right below it, to strip out from the record F completely.
Should be mandate, mandated, mandate.
Mandate.
The first amendment is filing a mandate action in the city court and the second one is to strike F completely?
That talks about the decision of the city council should be final. City councils shouldn't all den it.
What other amendment?
The other will be on page seven. Under 130 dot 10, we should have an addition sixteen, which would state any business that requires more than ten police runs in a calendar month to respond to a report of theft for a value less than fifty dollars would be classified as a nuisance.
Counselor, any other amendments? Motion to amend General Ordinance Number 28-2014 prior to second reading.
I make said motion, sir.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Is there any other amendments that the council would like to see? Now I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read General Ordinance Number 28-2014 by title only to include the amendments.
I move to read only by title, including the new amendments.
I second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. I'll ask the clerk to read into the record the by title only.
General Ordinance Number 28-2014 is an ordinance that amends Title 13, General Offenses of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beech Grove.
General Ordinance Number 28-2014 is up for second reading only. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I make said motion.
And the second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We'll hear it on third and final reading at the February meeting and we'll issue a new ordinance to all of you. That concludes unfinished business from the previous meeting under new business, Resolution Number One, 2015, RDC appointments. I will defer to the council pro tem to read the resolution and to act. Ed?
Thank you, mayor. Let me put everything aside here and find it. Okay, Resolution One to 2015. Resolution One, 2015 is a resolution presented to the mayor and the common council to fill positions on the RDC Redevelopment Commission as required by Indiana State statute. Whereas a redevelopment commission has been established by the common council for the city of Beech Grove and whereas from time to time commissioners resign their positions and often time frame between the appointments and end of term causes confusion and whereas it is recommended that appointments such as these be made on an annual basis to minimize confusion and whereas the mayor and the common council shall appoint new commissioners and or reaffirm current commissioner members for a period of one year. Therefore be it ordained that the mayor's appointments, the following citizens should the redevelopment commission for a period of one year ending January 4, 2016 and upon approval of this resolution, Ron Mo, Kathy Chapel, Janice King. Therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires the following citizens to be appointed to the redevelopment commission for a period of one year ending January 4, 2016 and upon approval of this resolution, Donald Webb and Linda Bellner. Therefore be further ordained that this resolution only applies for the appointments to the redevelopment commission and no other commission or board. Further ordained, therefore be it further ordained that this resolution shall go into effect immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, suggested by the clerk treasurer and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Ed. The floor is open for questions or comments.
All of these people have agreed that they're willing to continue serving.
Yeah, the two that you folks appoint, Donald Webb and Linda Bellner, have both desired to continue.
Right.
And Donald's here tonight if he wanted to make a comment?
No, I just want to make, you know, I know the ones we did because we spoke with them recently, it hasn't been that long, but I just, that's all. No reason. I move that we accept Resolution Number One.
Second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please sign the, your vote. Resolution Number Two, 2015, concerning BZA appointments by the city council, I'll defer to the council president pro tem.
Thank you, mayor. Resolution Number Two, 2015 is a resolution presented to the city of Beech Grove, common council to fill positions on the local board of zoning appeals as requested by the Department of Metropolitan Development for the city of Indianapolis and Marion County. Whereas the city of Beech Grove established a board of zoning appeals in 1991 and whereas the common council of the city of Beech Grove has three appointments to the local board of zoning appeals and the city of Indianapolis has two appointments on the same board and whereas the city of Indianapolis reappoints or appoints new members in January of each calendar year by resolution and whereas the Department of Metropolitan Development requests that the common council for the city of Beech Grove appoint or reappoints their three representatives for the local board of zoning appeals. Therefore be it further ordained that the common council for the city of Beech Grove appoints the following citizens to the local board of zoning appeals for the period of one year ending January 4, 2016 and upon approval of this resolution, Joe Heg, Diana Hendricks and Julie Weaver. Therefore be it ordained that this resolution only applies for the appointments to the local board of zoning appeals and no other commission or board. Therefore be it further ordained that this resolution goes into effect immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. The floor is open for questions or comments. For your, for the general information of the common council, all three of these people have indicated a desire to continue to serve on the board. Whether they choose or whether you have him is up to you folks. Any questions or comments? If not, I ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number Two, 2015.
I'll make said motion, mayor.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Please sign your vote. Under the next order of new business is Greenscape Commission appointment. I'll ask the clerk to read the resignation into the record, please.
I have attached a report from our last meeting. Beth Berg has entered the minutes. We will not meet in December. I will not be at the council meeting Monday as I mentioned in October. My four-year term is up in January. Please accept this email as my official resignation. It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve on the Greenscape Commission. Thanks for all you do, Tim Latimer.
Ask for a motion to accept the resignation?
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Tim's position on the Greenscape Commission is a city council appointment, so I will defer to the council president pro tem.
Thank you, mayor. As this was recently submitted, I would like to request to delay and open up any nominations for the next council meeting in February so that'll give us time to find appointment.
Questions or comments from council members?
I'll agree with Ed.
If not, ask for a motion to table till next meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll table it until the February meeting. Thank you very much. Under new business, General Ordinance Number One, 2015 is up for first reading this evening and I'll defer to the clerk to read it into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number One, 2015 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove pursuant to trash pickup. Whereas the employees of the Department of Public Works currently pick up trash throughout residential neighborhoods in our city and whereas employees of the Department of Public Works delivers all the trash collected to either Covanta or the Southside landfill for disposal and whereas at least fifty percent of all trash collected by the Department of Public Works employees could be recycled and not introduced to the earth and whereas recycling begins at home and we should encourage all of our residents to recycle household goods. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove to promote recycling throughout our residential neighborhoods, public events and all municipal properties. Now therefore be it ordained that the following amendment be added to Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Add the following. Ninety-six point four oh, recycling. The city of Beech Grove desires to provide a citywide recycling program for the following groups of people, municipal departments and public events. One, single and double family dwellings. Two, Department of Parks and Recreation. Three, municipal properties. Four, special events approved by the Board of Public Works and safety. Supervision. The recycling program shall be under the direction of the director of the Department of Public Works and shall conform to the following guidelines. A, employees of the Department of Public Works shall not have any responsibility in picking up recyclable materials or containers. B, the city shall not be responsible for the inventory, distribution, maintenance or any container, equipment or vehicle used to collect recyclables. C, the director of the Department of Public Works shall set up the routes for recycling pickup. Ninety-six point four two, collection. One, containers shall not be set out for collection on the curb line or alley line unless it is within a twenty-four hour pickup. Two, containers shall be removed from the curb line or alley line within twenty-four hours of pickup. Three, recyclables will not be picked up unless they are in the approved container. Four, damage to or removal of containers provided for recycling shall be mitigated between the resident and the contractor providing the recycling service. Five, recycling pickups shall not occur on a recognized city of Beech Grove holiday. Six, recycling pickups shall not occur on a Saturday or Sunday. Seven, recycling pickup operations shall not start before 7:00 AM or proceed after 4:00 PM on any given day. Eight, the recycling company shall provide collection service on a two-week route basis as determined by the director of the Department of Public Works beginning on July 1, 2015. Nine, the recycling pickup schedule can be modified at the discretion of the director of the Department of Public Works. Ten, municipal properties and city park pickups will be scheduled on a two-week basis but can be adjusted by the director of the Department of Public Works. Eleven, collection for special events will be under the direction of the director of the Department of Public Works. Ninety-six point forty-three, containment. One, the recycling company shall provide containers for recycling. Two, the container shall have a yellow lid, two wheels and contain ninety-six gallon storage capacity. Three, the recycling company shall deliver one container to each single family dwelling and one container to each side of a double dwelling. Four, the recycling company shall deliver the appropriate containers to each municipal department and within the Department of Parks and Recreation. Five, the recycling company under the direction of the director of the Department of Public Works shall deliver an adequate amount of recyclable containers to each special event that has been approved by the city of Beech Grove. Six, repairs, replacement and inventory shall be the sole responsibility of the recycling company. Seven, the recycling company shall provide instructions along with the delivery of the container on what is the best practice to handle the container. Ninety-six point forty-four, recyclable materials. One, as a minimum, the following items shall be considered as recyclable and should be placed in the approved container. A, newsprint. B, computer papers. C, writing papers. D, copy paper. E, envelopes. F, junk mail. G, magazines. H, newspapers. I, beverage cans. J, food cans. K, number one through number seven, plastics. L, corrugated cardboard. M, cardboard. N, paperboard. O, clear bottles. P, brown bottles. Q, green bottles. R, food cans. S, food jars. T, steel. U, aluminum. V, bi-metal beverage cans. And W, any other commodity as prescribed by the director of the Department of Public Works. Ninety-six point forty-five, reporting and billing. The recycling company shall report quarterly to the Board of Sanitation the amounts collected and any problems associated with the recycling program. Two, the recycling company shall bill the city of Beech Grove, Beech Grove Sewage Works monthly for providing recycling services. Three, property owners of single and double family dwellings and special event participants shall not pay a fee for recycling. Municipal properties shall be charged for monthly recycling services. Ninety-six point four six, collection equipment. Number one, the recycling contractor shall provide an adequate number of vehicles for regular collection of recyclables. Vehicles must be in good repair appearance and in a sanitary condition at all times. Two, the recycling contractor shall provide adequate containment of all collectibles by tying or enclosing collectibles to prevent leaking, spilling and blowing disposables that derive from the collection of recycled materials. Ninety-six point forty-seven, complaints and public education. One, complaints from residential households shall be made directly to the city of Beech Grove and shall be given prompt and courteous attention. In the case of alleged mis-scheduled collections, the city shall investigate and if such allegations are verified, shall arrange for the collection of the recycled materials within twenty-four hours of the compliant being received. Number two, the contractor at their cost shall provide residents with information and education materials concerning recycling. Such materials shall be distributed at least thirty days before the program starts, every six months thereafter and until the agreement ends, the contractor shall provide at their cost a public service. cost a public service announcement via United States Mail to the residents of Beach Grove concerning recycling and cleaning up our city. The Director of the Department of Public Works shall approve all materials prior to distribution. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council of the City of Beach Grove desires to establish a recycling program for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Chapter Ninety-Six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect on August first, 2015, after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro temp, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Before I open it up for comments from the council members or questions, there are some people that would like to speak on recycling, and I'll defer to legal counsel.
Yes, first is Christine Bush Collins. Am I pronouncing that right?
You are, thanks. Good evening. I'm Christine Bush Collins. I lived at 5420 Adelaide Street, and I'm here just to make a comment in support of the proposed recycling program. For a number of years, our family, out of a deep sense of environmental consciousness, has collected our recyclables and then carted them off to a local collection point. That local collection point is not within the City of Beach Grove, so whoever services that collection point takes those recyclables and then, obviously, has the benefit of any financial gain or financial recapture of those materials. So while taking what I estimate to be about thirty pounds of recyclables every two weeks and other than keeping those out of the trash collection process for the City of Beach Grove, there's really no other added potential for economic benefit for the city. So if there is, as a result of this ordinance, an economic benefit to the city, not just from keeping the recyclables out of the waste stream, but also in getting any sort of revenue from that, I would prefer that that revenue goes back to the City of Beach Grove and not to another entity outside of the City of Beach Grove. So I would say I definitely want to support the program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Paul Severance?
Thank you, Mayor Buckley, and members of the council. I, my name is Paul Severance. I live at 326 North Fifteenth Avenue. I've lived there for the last twelve or thirteen years. I can't quite keep that straight. I would like to start by reading a little, a brief, little bit of a poem by Drew Dillinger, because he says this so much better than I can, and this is what he says. "It's three twenty-three in the morning, and I'm awake, because my great-great-grandchildren won't let me sleep. My great-great-grandchildren ask me in dreams, 'What did you do while the planet was plundered? What did you do when the earth was unraveling? Surely you did something, as the mammals, reptiles, birds were all dying? What did you do once you knew?'" Well, we all know that dumping plastic and aluminum and paper and glass and et cetera in landfills and then extracting new resources from the earth and using petroleum energy to fashion those into new versions of the plastic, aluminum, paper, glass, et cetera, we all know that that is bad for our environment and bad for the environment that our great-grandchildren are going to inherit from us. We all know that burning aluminum, paper, glass, in, burning that, and then using resources to create new versions of those things, we know that that pollutes our atmosphere and is bad for our environment. So as the poet asks, "What are we going to do about what we know?", well, I want to say that this ordinance, I think, is a really important step in doing something about what we know is currently irresponsible on all of our parts. So I want to thank Mayor Buckley for his interest in, in getting this thing moving, and I want to thank all of you for what I hope will be your strong support for this proposed ordinance. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Severance.
All right, Carrie Hamilton.
Hello, my name's Carrie Hamilton. I'm the executive director of the Indiana Recycling Coalition. Mayor Buckley, members of the council, I'm thrilled to be able to be here tonight to stand in support, to rise in support of this ordinance. Just a few kind of broader points to the great points that have already been made. First of all, Indiana, this past legislative session in 2014 passed a new aggressive fifty percent recycling goal for the state. So with this ordinance, should you pass it, you will be moving quickly in the direction of supporting that statewide goal. So thank you, I hope you do move forward for that reason. Also, recycling creates jobs. It's the collection jobs, the sorting, processing, and then manufacturing of new products. All of those jobs, and many of them are in Indiana. Certainly, the collection jobs are local, but we have a really strong sector of the basic commodities manufacturers in Indiana, glass, plastic, paper, aluminum, steel manufacturers in particular. Those companies, those manufacturers, are frankly desperate for recycled content to make new products. They save significantly on their energy costs, and when it comes locally, they then save on the, the also the transportation costs that relate to the energy costs. So it's really a win-win for our economy and certainly our environment with the energy savings and the resource conservation piece that we've heard eloquently about already. Also, I want to just commend the mayor for putting together a committee of citizens to think about this issue and put together a strong ordinance. I hope, I challenge that committee in the future, again, should you move forward, to make sure, there's an important part of this ordinance that, that we strongly support, and that's the inclusion of public education from the contractor. I hope that the community and the committee will make sure that that piece happens, because what you have here is a proposal for a very successful program. You've got a convenient service provided to everyone. It's comprehensive. You're collecting a whole bunch of different types of material, and you've got public education included, and all of those elements are required for a successful program, and you, you have them. So that's, I commend you for that as well. I think you know, but recycling is very popular. Statewide, a public opinion poll done just a year ago showed very, very significant support, up in the seventies, eighties percents, depending on how the questions were asked for, for recycling in communities. And I think your city will be pleased, and certainly you'll be a model for other nearby communities that maybe haven't figured this out yet, and, and we would love to use you as an example in that regard. Case in point, actually, the City of Indianapolis reinstating their Christmas tree recycling program because of the public backlash. We were very excited this afternoon to see that that happened. I think those were the key points I wanted to make, and just would be glad to answer any questions, and again, thank you.
All right, and questions for the director?
I have questions in general. Not, I'm not opposed to recycling by any stretch of the imagination, but reading this ordinance, or amendment to whatever you want to call it, it raised way more questions than answers, in my mind. In terms of education, you spoke of, so that, that helped. However, there's no sorting on the part of, of the individual. They just, whatever's on the list can be thrown into that bucket and is sorted somewhere.
That's a great question. So how recycling has evolved in recent years is, back in the day, when these programs started, you would have a paper bin and maybe beverage container bin, and maybe the aluminum was separate, or the glass, maybe. Today, recycling companies that take this material in and sort it out have purchased the technology to put it all in one bin and sort it. So you have to keep the recyclables separate from the trash.
Right.
But if they're together, the technology is there, and the investments are here in central Indiana to do that, so that, that technology exists here. And, and that convenience for the resident has resulted in much higher participation in communities that went from the multi-bin to the single recycling bin. That's a great question.
Okay. The other thing, and maybe it's just me, I didn't see glass on here as one of the listed items on the end. It's all clear, is that clear bottles, brown bottles?
That is glass, yeah, yeah. That's, that maybe should be added.
Okay, well, I just, I...
No, that's, that's good, yeah.
Just making sure. The other thing was, like, compliance. I mean, what if somebody doesn't do it? What if they just keep throwing stuff in their regular trash? Or what if they throw regular trash? And where, where do we go with that? What can of worms is that?
The, the recycling company, or whoever, this will have to be bid out.
Right.
And then whoever is awarded the bid, they, they monitor that. The people who pick up the recyclables monitor that, and then they issue warnings to them, and then if it gets to the point where they're not going to comply, then they won't pick it up anymore.
Okay. And on our part, what if people don't comply with recycling and keep throwing it in their regular trash? Are we...
Well, we don't, our trash pickup continues like it always has.
Okay.
I could just answer generally, most communities choose not to enforce with the hard stick. They provide the carrot and the public education, and then not everyone will participate. That's what you're going to find, but most people will. And most people will love participate, and they'll feel good about it.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll get used to it.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm not against this, and I'm, I'm not trying to put a wet blanket on it. I'm just trying to figure all the things that...
No, it's great to ask those questions, yeah, yeah. I'm sure you're not the only person.
Well, I think one of the things that, that is good about it is, is long before any of us were sitting up here, we were not being good stewards of the environment as a city. And our guys pick up, every time they pick up trash, they pick up a lot of stuff that goes to the dump or goes to Covanta that shouldn't go there. And you know what? We're our own worst enemy, so we need to correct the behavior a little bit.
Yeah.
Amen.
Well, again, thank you. I, I wish you all the success in the world, and if I can, if our organization can be of help anyway, please let us know.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Don?
Donald Webb, 1331 Middleham Lane. I have been doing Ray's recycling for about ten years, and what I found is, before I met my present wife, it all went into the big trash, and it was full by the end of the week, and now it's roughly half-full, and we have two containers that we put out. Every, tomorrow night, we'll put them out for recycling. One of the things I think's key is, this is not costing the taxpayer or the homeowner any more money. It's revenue neutral, which is a good thing. Two, it puts us a little bit ahead of Covanta in their recycling efforts. More of these streams that we will produce will be taken care of, whereas Covanta has a little, will have, right now, they burn everything, but when they get their recycling operation going, they will only be able to handle about sixty percent of the trash that still comes into Covanta. So it will still be a lot left out there that could be recycled. And the other thing is, when we talk about Beach Grove and working on the brand and the image, when we look at the young kids today, they have been educated to be more eco-friendly, more efficient, and as those young people graduate college and stuff like that, they're going to look for cities and towns that promote, you know, green energy, green recycling, and I think moving Beach Grove just into this will move us ahead and put us where we need to be, because again, we're, you know, to keep our town growing, we need young people, and we need, you know, programs like these, and it is really easy to participate. That's the other thing. It's not like you have to sit there and think about it. I mean, it'll be a nice big tote, and I think it'll really be easy on the homeowner, and I would suspect we'd probably get eighty to eighty-five percent participation over the next year when we start it. So I hope you guys will consider that and vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Webb.
Mr. Webb?
Yes, ma'am.
With Ray's, that you said they do weekly pickup?
Yes, ma'am. It's fifty, I, I pay fifty-four dollars every April, which, if this gets passed, that'd be cool, because then I wouldn't have to pay it this year. But, I mean, you know, I've paid it for ten years now, so that's five-hundred-and-forty bucks that, you know, I don't mind, because again, you know, my wife has shown me how easy it is, and I mean, we do, we have a little separate bin, and, you know, like I say, Tuesday night, we take it out, they come by, they pick it up, but, I mean, it's, like I say, it'll be a good program for us, I think, and it'll help the city move forward, and it will be more attractive and improve the brand of Beach Grove.
Okay. And one last question, maybe, Mayor. Who is the committee that was referred to that's working on this?
There was a group of residents that, and there was about a dozen of them, that got together, but this originally came, if you remember, one of the middle school kids came in.
The school came, it started from that?
This is where that originated, and they picked it up.
And then this group. Okay, I'm just trying to...
And then it's here now.
You know, like I, like I said, I'm not against it, I'm for it, I, I will participate, and I, I support it. I just wanted to get some things, it just kind of came to me out of the blue, in my mind, you know? Not that we haven't talked about it in the past, and I knew someday we'd get here, but I didn't expect to see it this last week, so that's all.
And the Public Works Director, if this passes first reading, at the next meeting, he would like to address you on it as well, from a operational standpoint and a cost standpoint.
That would be great, that would be great.
So, floor is open for questions or comments?
I think it's been covered.
Sir, is there a slight correction I can make?
On the date?
It's, it's only a spelling.
Yeah, what's the spelling?
Ninety-six point four, Dan did read it right. The item number one, the last three words in that are compliant being received, that's supposed to be complaint. It's on the last page.
Okay, we won't have to amend for that, I don't think.
It's just a dispelled word, sir.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll ask for motion to approve General Ordinance Number One, 2015, on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will move it to second reading at the February meeting. General Ordinance Number Two, 2015, is up for first reading only tonight, and I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record. Dan?
General Ordinance Number Two, 2015, is an ordinance that amends Chapter Thirty-Nine of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to the Ordinance Violations Bureau. Whereas, the clerk treasurer is ultimately responsible for the collection, deposit, and the handling of funds pursuant to the city court, and whereas the city court accepts payments for violations, and whereas such payments are made outside of the courtroom setting, and whereas such payments are deposited into the general fund of the City of Beach Grove, and whereas fees and timeframes for payments are adjusted concerning ordinances and penalties. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter Thirty-Nine of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires the following amendment be placed in the Code of Ordinances. Chapter Thirty-Nine, Ordinance Violations Bureau. Delete in its entirety, insert the following new ordinance in its entirety. Chapter Thirty-Nine, Ordinance Violations Bureau. Section Thirty-nine point oh-one, Ordinance Violations Bureau created. Thirty-nine point oh-two, clerk treasurer accepts payments of fines. Thirty-nine point oh-three, Schedule Section Subject to Admission of Violation. Thirty-nine point oh-four, Admission of and Payment of Penalties. Thirty-nine point oh-one, Ordinance Violations Bureau created. There shall be an Ordinance Violations Bureau for the City of Beach Grove, and the clerk treasurer shall serve as a violations clerk of such bureau. Ordinance One dash nineteen eighty-nine, pass five-eight-eight-nine, AM. Ordinance Number Four, twenty-twelve, pass three-nineteen of twenty-twelve. Thirty-nine oh-two, clerk treasurer to accept payments of fines. A, All violations of Beach Grove Court of Ordinances pursuant to the City Court of Beach Grove will be collected through the Ordinance Violations Bureau unless stipulated by Indiana Code. B, The city court clerk shall accept written appearances, waivers of trial, and admissions of violations and payment of civil penalties of not more than two-thousand-five-hundred dollars in ordinance violation cases. Ordinance One, nineteen eighty-nine, pass five-eight of nineteen eighty-nine, AM. Ordinance Four, twenty-twelve, pass three-nineteen of twenty-twelve. Ordinance 4, 2012, pass 3/19/2012. 39.03, Schedule of Section Subject to Admission of Violation. The following sections of this Code of Ordinances shall be subject to admission of violations before the clerk treasurer. Code sections 70.01 through 70.08. 70.01, 71.05, 71.06, 71.35 through 71.38, 71.45, 71.47, 71.50, 71.61, 71.62, 71.99, 72.01 through 72.99, 73.01 through 73.11, 74.01 through 74.99, 75.01 through 75.99, 76.01 through 76.99. Chapter 77, Schedule 1 and 2. Chapter 78, Schedule 1, 2, and 3. 90.01 through 90.99. 112.01 through 112.99. 114.04 through 114.99. 115.01 through 115.99. 116.01 through 116.99. 117.01 through 117.99. 131.01 through 131.99. 151.01 through 151.99. Ordinance 1, 1989, pass 5/8/89. AM Ordinance Number 2, 2009, pass 1/6/09. AM Ordinance Number 4, 2012, pass 3/19/12. 39.04, Admission of and Payment of Penalties. A, a violator of the section listed in 39.03 above may elect to admit a violation of any of the above scheduled ordinances before the clerk treasurer. The clerk treasurer may assess a civil penalty as follows. One, $25 if the penalty is paid within seven days, and two, $40 if the penalty is paid within eight to sixty days after the violation is issued. B, admission and payment of penalties under this chapter may be made in person by mail or through an agent of the violator, which agency shall be evidenced by a written instrument signed by the violator. Ordinance 1, 1989, pass 5/8/89. AM Ordinance 4, 2008, pass 5/7/08. AM Ordinance 4, 2012, pass 3/19/12. Therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 39 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove. Therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 39 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove. Therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president, Pro Tim, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Floor is open for questions or comments. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 2, 2015, on first reading.
I'd like to question some.
Okay.
Just for clarification purposes, because there's been so many things brought out today, I'm under the impression that this will have no change for the upcoming calendar year.
As my understanding is, the police department collects these funds, and we were in agreement with the clerk treasurer to do this for safety reasons. Makes it more convenient, and our building's more secure, and we could even have police officers there if there's a problem. This was an agreement the clerk and I had last year, I think, and we would like to continue to do this. But the only thing this ordinance does is clarify that the clerk treasurer is in charge of this, and we collect it by him allowing us to collect it. That's the only, it doesn't change what we would like to do as far as collecting.
So people aren't going to come into City Hall and ask for, to make payments?
No, I think the notice is still there, and will stay there, that they don't collect for violations. And I, I think that it should still stay that way. This only clarifies some of the wording of the ordinance.
And my point is, it's definitely a safety factor, and like I say, we agreed to that, I think, last year.
Yeah, I would like to continue that agreement with him.
But you ultimately control the money, I mean...
The police department turns it in to our office.
They just turn it to you, I mean, they collect it and give it to you.
On the next business day.
It goes into whatever fund you need to put it in.
And it's deposited into the general fund.
So there's really no change.
So, really, there's no change, other than language, I guess, would be.
When you say it's a safety factor, what, what all is entailed in this? I mean, is it big money, or is...
It's not big money, but if you give somebody a ticket for parking violation or something else, sometimes they get angry. And if they come into the police station, we have a bullet-resistant glass, we have camera system, and when you come into the police station, it might change your attitude that you don't want to argue as much. We still get some that argue, and sometimes we have to send a police officer out there to discuss the situation with them. And it calms them down, and they understand they're not there to dispute it. If they want to dispute it, they can ask for a court date, and they'll be given a court date, and resolve it that way.
And that's a very good way, in my mind, to simplify it, just saying it just like you did, and having the clerk treasurer be in agreement, that's the safest thing to do, the wisest thing to do.
Right.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much, chief.
Any other questions or comments from council members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 2, 2015, on first reading only.
I'll make said motion, sir.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will hear this on second reading at the February 2nd meeting. That concludes new business. Time for council comments, beginning on my far right.
I really don't have any tonight, it's a good meeting.
Anthony?
No comment.
Ed?
Thank you for coming out, happy new year, be safe out there, the roads tonight, sounds like it's going to be our first major storm.
I can't wait. Thanks, everybody.
I'd just like to comment that I feel like we've got a lot accomplished this evening, all great things being done for the city of Beech Grove and for us as citizens, making our city an example. And thank you, everybody, for coming, and I think this is all just a step in the right direction for all of us, and I thank everybody for their input into it. That's it.
Thank you, Mary. I'll have to defer to the clerk to read a letter from the Indianapolis Metropolitan Planning Organization asserting a grant award. Dan?
This was to our department head, Brad Meriwether. Dear Brad, this letter serves as notice that the 2019 call for project recommendations were approved by the IRTC Policy Committee at the December 18, 2014 meeting, and the following projects have been amended into the 2014 through 2017 IRTIB as illustrated projects. This is for Churchman Avenue Sidewalks Project, and the Indianapolis MPO formally requests that you immediately begin project development, as the new Use It or Lose It guidance provided by NDOT does not allow any flexibility in the year that your projects are programmed to be led.
Could you read that through, across there?
Okay. The desk number is 1401657. The LPA is City of Beech Grove. Project title, Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project. Type, pedestrian enhancement. Fun type, STP, SFY 2018. Federal cost, $791,120. Local cost, $197,780. Total cost, $988,900.
And we received that award on December 19 of 2014, so we'll begin that process here within the next, or by the spring.
Awesome.
So, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.